All this meeting order is right at six on March nineteenth, County Council. We'll begin with a public comment session, just so everybody knows, we're gonna move the one minute remaining up here that I'll hold up, about four minutes, and then I'll hold it up at obviously three minutes and turn it over, so we'll stop at four minutes so we can go from there. Mr. Al Schuler, please.
I'm Al Schuler, and a couple of weeks ago, when I heard on the news about the college scandal where the people were paying to get admitted to colleges and everything, I started thinking about it. And corruption like that hurts everybody. I mean, for everybody in that scandal that got a college education is some deserving person bitten. And when I thought about it a little more, I realized that it trickles down everywhere. I mean, in our community or anything, anytime anything cheats, we pay the price. Now, I'm gonna talk about transparency for the county government. I don't mean that in any way, shape, or form to think I think the county government is corrupt, but I think I would be naive to think that there wasn't some corruption in O'Conne County somewhere. Transparency is a cornerstone of our county government. My full presentation outlines how we can achieve true transparency. It's available to you. The council was nice enough to put it in their backup material. You can copy it from there and read it. It's available on the county website there. It's also available on my Facebook page, which is @AlSchuler. You can copy it from there, share it with anybody you want to. Fortunately for me, you can't criticize me unless you happen to be a friend of mine, but other than that, it's all right. Here are the basics. If you look at your agenda, you see the fine print down on the bottom of it. The fine print down there, I'm just gonna read the first part of it, says council meetings shall be conducted pursuant to the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. That means everything they do in those meetings, that's what it's supposed to be. And I think it's important for the citizens especially to know what that Freedom of Information Act contains. The basic principle of the Freedom of Information Act is that county agencies, doesn't matter what it is, are supposed to be a glass house. We should be able to see anything that's going on, find out what's happening, be able to know what's going on. Now, there are, and they are listed in the Freedom of Information Act, there are some exclusions that we're not allowed to know about, and that's the reason they have executive sessions. Just one minute. I will call it quits at that, because I don't wanna run over my four minutes, but I would appreciate it if everybody would get a copy of that and read it, because it tells you how to do it, where to do it. You don't have to be a lawyer, you can even do it in handwriting.
Represent myself and anybody else of like mine. I want to talk about economic development and potential youth recreation funding. I certainly understand the need for the New Tri-County Tech Campus and School District Career Center to be near the center of the county. And since additional land is available at this site, it is reasonable to recruit other tenants to this location. I do have a problem in what appears to be the almost complete abandonment of the Golden Corner Commerce Park in Southern O'Conne. The county has invested over ten million dollars in this park since two thousand and five without one cent of return, as far as I can tell. Now, to me, that's not good stewardship of the tax dollar, what you got responsible for, and your predecessors. Funds were burnt budgets for spec building in this park several years ago. So far, no spec building. And I have asked if funds for the spec building are in danger of being diverted to a project like the new business incubator everybody's talking about. Worst case would be if these funds, budgets for the spec building have already been spent on other items. I'd like that question answered by the next council meeting, and I think I deserve it as a taxpaying citizen. I believe three hundred thousand dollars in C funds were designated for work on the entrance to the Golden Corner Commerce Park. Some work was done on this entrance, but I would like to know what the status of this project is, and what portion of the C-TAC money has been spent and for what. You can get that by next council meeting. I would like to know the current marketing efforts to attract good tenants through this park, and what marketing efforts have been completed in the past. I will limit the timeframe, these marketing efforts, to the time period between when Michelin bowed out on their new distribution center and up to the present. If there are no marketing efforts being conducted for this site, I would like to know why. From the comments I've heard, the community is not interested in trying to tie up all three hundred acres in this site for a rumored solar farm, simply because there will be no adequate economic return on county, to the county from this farm. I believe it's reasonable to expect to receive answers to my questions before or at next council meeting. Second, this is a question from Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis, do you plan to try to put additional youth rec funding in this year's budget? I believe I pick a simple yes or no. That's real governance right there, people. You're not gonna answer my question. I'm a resident taxpayer of O'Conne. Second question, which you're not gonna answer. If you put additional rec funding in there, are you gonna treat fair use of their kids equals, that equals to other kids in this county? No answer. Now, trust me, there's a lot more I'd like to say to you right now. You gotta live your style. And I just better sit down right now.
Any written comments can be delivered to Ms. Smith. I'll open it up to council comments.
Yes, I've got one. I received a letter, and probably all the council members did, from the Executive Director of the Tribble Center. It reads, "I am extremely concerned about the impact that will occur on South Cove Road if the developer is allowed to use the road during construction of the two hundred and thirty-five patio homes with the access point just beyond the Tribble."
Please, I may.
Yes, ma'am. As you know, South Cove Road is a one-way in, one-way out for those that live, work, and enjoy South Cove Park. In my opinion, allowing the developer to use South Cove Road during the construction process will not only add to traffic, but the amount of damage to the road will certainly happen. My other concern is with the safety of the Tribble Center clients and staff that work here, and those clients that reside on or around South Cove Road. Every day, vans and other Tribble Center vehicles enter and exit the road coming to work activity center, going to other work sites in the community, places of activity, and going home. Adding to the already heavy traffic, especially during the spring, summer, and fall seasons, will pose additional safety concerns and hazards. It's incumbent upon all of us that we keep the most vulnerable citizens safe. And another paragraph, but I won't finish reading it, but so, and I think the, I got a letter, we got a letter this evening from the Planning Commission about a possible study in the bounty land area, and it may be that we want to extend that to the South Cove Road to see what can be done.
Any other council member comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to compliment Mr. Elliott for what he said, and it goes back to, it's a little, it's a little late for planning to be, this thing's already underway, and now, Mr. Elliott's legitimate concerns with the letter he wrote. Where was, my question is, where was planning when this whole thing was going on? These Tribble Center, these vulnerable people with special needs, they need to be watched after more than any of us. Now we got all this traffic, and it should've been planned ahead of time, knowing this thing was gonna be happening. So, once again, we were caught with our proverbial backs to the actual situation, and that letter Mr. Elliott read, is a legitimate concern, a very legitimate concern. Thank you.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, I agree with you, Mr. McCall, you know, as council, we are tasked with, I believe it's one of our primary functions, is to plan, and unfortunately, there was not effective planning done in years past, and so, we need, there's no time like present to remedy this, and so, I'm very happy to hear that there's support for planning, and, you know, being that we're in the midst of our comprehensive planning process as well, of course, as corridor planning on one twenty-three, I'm looking forward to hopefully heading off some of these future issues right now. So, yeah, we, this is just another example of what a failure to plan does result in.
But how long have we had, the problem is, Paul, how long have we had a planning commission that's been sitting there and doing nothing?
Well, no.
They've been there for, since I've been on council, we've had a planning commission, and now, we're saying we need to plan. Well, obviously, the planning commission did not plan for the problem we have now. They've been worried about everything but what Mr. Elliott read in the letter.
I mean, you know, I think that there's plenty of blame to pass around, but I wouldn't blame the planning commission for this. I think at the, at the end of the day, the buck stops with the council, and they have sent recommendations to us many times, which we've either passed back to them or voted against, and, you know, I think that it's just another example of a failure to plan by the council, and at the end of the day, we're elected to solve these problems. Planning commission is just a board disappointed by us, so we have to take responsibility for it and try to prevent it from happening in the future through good planning, through good ordinance drafting. I mean, I hate that this situation's happening over in that area. Unfortunately, we didn't, we didn't plan for it, we didn't know it was gonna happen.
They've done nothing. They've done nothing about, they knew this development was coming, they've done nothing about it. They've been worried about everything else but what's smacking us in the face right now. They don't, you know, they, they did not come with the council at all and says, hey, you know, there's a development coming, council, y'all need to do something about this development coming. No, the development's already underway.
May I, Mr. Chairman? I'm not sure if everybody on council is aware, the development is inside of the city of Seneca and was outside of the jurisdiction of our sitting planning commission or this We can plan around that, but the actual development is inside of the city of Seneca.
The city of Seneca owes us a courtesy to let us know what was going on.
I have a telephone number I'd be happy to share with you after this meeting, sir.
I got his cell phone number.
All right. Any other comments? A moment of silence. Thank you. Mr. Reed?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Pray with me if you'd like to. Father, let me start by acknowledging, honoring you, standing in all of you, the bodies that you create. Harmony. Awesome. Pray that by your wisdom, that harmony would be here. Love instead of hostility. First spirit will prevail here, and we do good work. Base for this camp.
Mr. Hart, if you'll lead us in the pledge.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Several approval of minutes, we got February twenty-seventh strategic planning retreat minutes. Have motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Second.
All right. Any changes, discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? On March fifth, twenty nineteen, regular minutes, have motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Second.
All right. Any changes, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? March eighth, twenty nineteen, special meeting minutes.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any changes or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Administrator comments, Ms. Brock?
Yes, sir, just as a follow-up to the discussion you were just having about the bounty land community. Mr. McCall, it is our every intent to work with the city of Seneca to do planning implementation processes outside of what they're doing there, because the city of Seneca's property is, of course, adjacent to ours. The city has done, or recommended the development do a traffic impact analysis. We will get that information from the city and begin conducting our own traffic impact analysis, piggybacking on the information provided by theirs. It has to be addressed, but this planning commission nor you could've known this was gonna happen unless we had continuous and better conversation with the city. The other note is there was a minor calculation, or either I just flipped numbers when I submitted the request on behalf of the YMCA, and I did see representatives here tonight. The request for fifty-seven thousand five hundred on page two of the agenda should be an approximate seventy-one thousand. I don't know if I miscalculated or just flipped numbers typing it in. I apologize for the error on the agenda.
Mr. Reed, do we need to amend that as stated on there? When the item comes up, you can make a motion, and make a motion to amend to add the additional, whatever, I guess fourteen thousand.
Yes.
All right. And move right into the presentation to council. We do have Alta Planning here in design. Appreciate y'all being here with us tonight, and also, I know you're gonna share that, but I do appreciate, I think it was yesterday, and I know y'all will continue to do some things today, appreciate the involvement of the citizens that have came forward. I know you're gonna share a little bit about that today, but that's one of the things that I think this council is prided on, is getting more people involved. Appreciate all that y'all are doing to encourage that.
Yes, I completely agree. We'll get to that section, but we've been so impressed with all the engagement, so ditto on that comment. Thank you all for having us here tonight. My name is Kat Mainz, I'm with Alta Planning and Design. We're working on the Highway one twenty-three corridor study with the planning department here. I'm gonna give you a brief overview of our project and process to date. So, I'd like to start with just a brief quote to kind of share the spirit of why we're here and what we're doing. Leading innovation is not about getting people to follow you into the future, it's about getting people to co-create with you. So, that's why we're here in O'Conne County, working on this with everybody, and trying to get as many people of, as many members of the public and as many stakeholders as possible involved over the past two days and tomorrow while we're here. So, brief overview of the study corridor. We are looking at the section from the eastern limits of the city of Seneca to the eastern county limits, right at the, at Lake Hartwell. It's about four and a half miles. It's a pretty important corridor for the, for the county, as we've, as we've seen, as we've talked to people through here. You have several of the high employment centers are around the corridor, it can be accessed from the corridor, and it's one of the main connections between the two activity nodes of Seneca and City of Clemson. We see a lot of opportunity in this corridor. One of the main growth areas, lots of opportunity with some of the right-of-way that you have around the area. There we go. So, this is a map showing your recently closed construction permits for this corridor area and currently open construction permits. You notice there's a lot of activity around the eastern end of the corridor, and sprinkled throughout the rest of the corridor as well, but in a less concentrated manner. It's also one of the points of entry and exit for the county, in addition to point of entry and exit for City of Seneca and City of Clemson, so there's shared impetus to really make this a place of pride for the county. There's also a couple of utility easements that we've seen in this area that could potentially bring public good, public access for the corridor. There's also really wide right-of-way. We don't see this all the time when we do corridor studies like this. There's about two hundred sixty feet of consistent right-of-way throughout the corridor, and most of it is undeveloped currently. There's also a lot of access to healthy food relative to the rest of the corridor, in addition to some other convenience items as well, but right now, three grocery stores along the corridor, as well as the planned Publix as well, so offers an important connection to daily needs. At the same time, we see some constraints along the corridor, some things that we have to work around as we figure out what the future of this corridor looks like. The first one you see is, if you're in a car, it's, you know, it's really easy to get from point A to point B in this, but if you're not in a car, there's really no dedicated space for walking, or biking, or for the transit that's running on this corridor. We've also heard a lot about safety concerns in this corridor, and that's backed up by some of the safety data, some of the crash data that the county has looked at. This image shows an example of one of the main safety issues, which is people having to decelerate as, before they pull right into these driveways without being able to kind of pull out of the road with people going fast behind them. And we also, with that right-of-way, that wide right-of-way you have, there's a flipside of that, which is that a lot of it isn't flat, there's some environmental constraints and some serious topography challenges that would be associated with adding development or new road amenities in that right-of-way that exists today. We've also, I know a lot of you have experienced this on many occasions, it doesn't happen many times a year, but there is game day traffic that uses this corridor, so it's not something that we think should dictate the design necessarily, but it is a reality that we have to pay attention to. And there's also this Norfolk Southern Rail Line that acts as a barrier on the north side of the corridor, it hugs the corridor pretty closely through the eastern section, makes it difficult for any development on the north side to get across that rail line and access properties over there. We also understand that there have been other planning studies that have looked at this corridor, studied the context a little bit. Your past twenty-ten comprehensive plan already identified that there was some growth areas along this corridor. And this list shows the five main transportation goals outlined in that plan from almost ten years ago. We think this study has an opportunity to really forward three of those goals, thinking about upgrading your road system in a way that does not impact sensitive areas negatively, supporting the expansion of mass transit by supporting the cat bus service that's currently operating on this corridor, and then encouraging the expansion of bicycle and pedestrian routes in the county if deemed that this corridor is in fact the right place for that to occur. And we also understand you're in the middle of your comp plan update, so we pulled some of the analysis that's been done for that. This map here shows some of the population change, twenty-two thousand to twenty-ten, showing that it is one of the higher-growth areas in the county over that time span. At the same time, when you look at the median household income data, it shows is one of lower than the overall average for the county through this area, and with higher minority population rates. So, there's a need to think about this area through an equity lens as well. There's been some crash analysis that the county has done, looking at some of the crash data. This corridor is one of the top fifteen roadways for collisions in the county, and it has several fatalities, so we know that the safety concern is not only anecdotal, but it's backed up by data as well. This is a version of that map showing the heat map of all collisions, not just fatalities, so you see Highway one twenty-three pops up again as one of those focus areas. There's also this Destination O'Conne Plan, which has a streamlined, unified vision for branding and image for the county. It provides some guidance on signage and wayfinding, things that could help support that point of entry and exit through the county and create a unified experience of going through the county. So, I'm gonna talk about our process a little bit over the past two days and tomorrow while we're here. The past month, we've been planning for this workshop and doing some of our existing conditions analysis. The past two days, we've been here, we'll be here tomorrow as well, collecting input and developing some preliminary ideas based on the input that we've gotten. And then, over the course of the next six weeks, we'll be compiling all of that, refining it, doing some more technical review on it, and submitting something back to the county for completion by the end of April. This is an overview of our process for this three-day workshop. We started with our planning commission meeting last night, where we had a great workshop, lots of attendance, really lively discussion about the corridor. Today, our open design studio in the morning was also well-attended, we had a packed room across the hall in the conference room, and had a full, almost two-hour discussion with about fifteen people who showed up. Tonight, we're here at your county council, and tomorrow, we're doing another open design studio from ten to twelve, all are welcome to join for that, and a open design pinup at the end of the day between four PM and six PM, where we'll be showing everything that we've come up with and all of the feedback that we've gotten over the past couple of Here's some photos from some of those events I just talked about. On the top left, some of our fieldwork, our site work. The top right shows the steering committee meeting we did yesterday, where we gathered around maps and did a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis. The bottom right shows the same format of workshop that we did with the public, and the bottom left shows our open design studio from this morning. So, who we heard from? This is a list of the stakeholders that have been part of our steering committee so far. So who we heard from? This is a list of the stakeholders that have been part of our steering committee so far. We've also heard from lots of members of the public, including people who work and live along the corridor. Some of what we heard. There's definitely some concerns. Again, safety has been a topic that's come up time and time again. People are really concerned in particular about some of those right-turn lanes, left-turn lanes, being able to safely access some of the development and the growth that's happening along the corridor. We also got some big ideas that kind of get people thinking a little bit differently about the corridor, including what if there's traffic circles or elevated bridges? These are things that might be constrained given finance and timelines, but are showing what people see when they look forward to the vision of this corridor in, you know, 10 to 20 years. We heard a lot of similar things from the planning commission and from the public last night. Some similar concerns about safety, some concerns about safety, speeding came up as well. People going fast on the corridor and whether or not it makes sense to reduce or make the speed limit higher, depending on what kind of future you want to have on the corridor. Some of the big ideas included water taxis, taking advantage of all of the waterfront land that you have here. And of course, flying cars, which is something that we can, we can all look forward to. That's all we have for you today. Thank you very much.
Any councilman requests to them? You want to introduce your team that's here today too?
Sure. With me today is Chloe, Chloe Weigle from the Atlanta office with me and Wade Walker, who is out of our Charlotte office. We've been working very closely with Adam Chapman, the planning department, and Bill Higgins as well.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I want to thank this council for approving this and also the planning commission for their work on it. This is, you know, it's like the best time to plant a tree is 30 years ago. The best time to start planting is probably 30 years ago too, but you know, there's no time like the present to start getting that ball rolling. So appreciate this council recognizing that as a priority and putting some, some funds toward it.
All right. We have no public hearings, no third readings. So we do have a second reading on the following ordinance, ordinance 201913, ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement between Oconee County, South Carolina, and Project Plan 4, granting of special source credit, the conveyance of certain real property, inclusion of Plan 4 in a joint county industrial and business park, and the execution and delivery of a MCIP agreement and other matters relating thereto, including without limitation payment fee in lieu of tax. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. We have a first reading on the following ordinance, ordinance 201914, ordinance to amend, ordinance 201801, for which established the budget for Oconee County and provided for the levy of taxes for ordinary county purposes for the Tri-County Technical College Special Revenue Fund, for the Emergency Service Protection Special Revenue Fund, for the Road Maintenance Special Revenue Fund, for the Victim Service Special Revenue Fund, Bridge and Culvert Capital Project Fund, and the Debt Service Fund for the Economic Development Capital Project Fund, all in Oconee County for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, ending July, June 30th, 2019, in certain limited regards and other matters related thereto. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. We do have a first and final reading that will be addressed as part of this Transportation Committee report. So we will hold that off until that committee reports, if that's okay with Mr. Hart.
Fine.
Okay. All right. We do have discussion regarding action items. I do need a motion to amend the action item as discussed by Ms. Brock for the 57.5 to actually add in 14,500. Is that where we were headed?
It's an approximate number on the request anyway, but I don't want that approximate number to be not calculated correctly in the backup data in the agenda itself. So it is approximately 14,000, yes, sir, being a total of 71,000.
I make a motion to approve this in the amount of $71,000.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Why is it we're giving YMCA as a private, they sell memberships, they're a for-profit or organization? And yet when our cities and other charitable groups request, don't, or rock, they, they're told, well, we don't have any or we can't, you can't get that much. These are municipalities which are all taxpayers. This is a private organization. This rock is going on private property, not public or municipal property. I just question this.
Mr. McCall, I am really happy you asked about the municipal gravel. I don't want to have a spoiler for the April 2nd budget meeting, but I think there are a couple surprises you'd like to see back on our budget pages rather than off. That doesn't have a whole lot to do with this request, but it does have to do with something you just mentioned about the municipality, sir.
Because I get calls from the municipalities all the time. Can you please, fire departments, please give us rock for our parking lot. I say, I can't give you anything. I gotta ask, you gotta ask the administrator.
Not a spoiler alert, but stay tuned for April 2nd.
Well, this is set in the present. You know, if somebody else municipality comes up and says, you gave a private, private entity 87,000, why not me?
I don't know why we can't do both, really.
All right.
And I do believe the YMCA does provide an enormous service to Oconee County and the children.
But they sell, but they sell memberships.
Facility. Well, without the construction of this facility, my child personal, my child personal has gone to YMCA after-school program since kindergarten and loves it. And they are housed in schools, in small spaces, program development, program directors. I'm only speaking on behalf of myself. My child has been a happy YMCA child.
And I don't think they're for-profit. I believe they're nonprofit.
Either.
Organization.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Thank you for allowing me to be here. My name is Crystal Ross and I'm the CEO of the Foothills Area YMCA. And I've been in this position for four years. That, the building of Y has been a project that we've been trying to do since I've been here, but also for many, many years before that. So a lot of you that have lived here are familiar with the fact that we've had different locations. The YMCA is a nonprofit organization. Our goal is to develop youth, adults, seniors, and families. So we're going to have something for everybody in the community. We do sell memberships, but memberships help us not to be a burden to the city or the county coming to look for money in those ways. What we do as an organization is we provide scholarships to people who can't afford the programs. So if you can't afford it, you pay for it. If you can't afford it, then we do the scholarships to help you come so that no children are turned away from the programs like after-school that you mentioned. So that gives us the opportunity to serve everybody and that we don't deny people the services. When we add the facilities that we're doing, which is really cool, we've primarily been a childcare organization and youth sports. But what we'll do with the new facility is we're adding a six-lane indoor pool that will teach the kids at our elementary schools how to swim. We're partnering with the school district to do that. So the children in like third or fourth grade will be bused to our YMCA and they'll go through a swim lesson as a part of their PE component. So we're going to make sure that the kids here are at least getting water safety or learning how to swim through these programs. And that's going to help us in a county that has lakes and rivers that we do. So it's really important that they learn that. The other thing that we're doing is our location on the hospital campus is going to give us access to fitness programs and that pool's going to help us with water rehab programs. We're going to be able to do fitness for all ages. And then we also will have fields to be able to do programs. So I hope that answers your question. We are a nonprofit. We do sell memberships, but that keeps me from having to look to the county or the city to help me support my operations. I pay for them through the memberships.
We do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We do have another action item, execution of contract and agreement with American Credit Financial Services, ACFS, for the auditor, treasurer, and delinquent tax offices, as stated in the vendor services agreement. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Yes. How much is they going to charge on this? I mean, what kind of percentage?
It's 20% above and beyond the delinquent tax base fee.
I suppose it's going to be 50%.
Oh, Lord, no.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right. We do also have a request for council to approve the commitment not to exceed 300,000 in matching funds for the application of the SC Rule Infrastructure Authority Grant for the amount of 500,000 for the water and sewer infrastructure expansion in the Seneca Rail Park. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We do have, let me make sure that's part of that. Another, one more action item, the PRT Commission Local ATAX Recommendations for the Spring 2019 Cycle for 83,500. Staff has recommended to council approve local ATAX recommendations per the spreadsheet that everyone has. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. We do have a discussion on the Sewer South transfer. I'll turn this over to administration.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'll, I'll just give some background since we probably had this as an executive session item for, well, I don't know how long, many, many, many months. And so the public may not know the full background. We've been working with the Oconee Joint Regional Sewer Authority for the transfer and operation of what's commonly known as Sewer South. Phase one has been built. That was built by county funds. It extend, there was a pump station at the Golden Corner Commerce Park that extends to the treatment facility that is owned by the Sewer Authority. Phase two, which is, we've committed some matching funds for grant funding, is being applied for by the Sewer Authority to extend the line from the Golden Corner Commerce Park to Highway 85. So we've been in the process of trying to get a tight agreement in place with the Sewer Authority that would initially has been to transfer county's ownership of phase one, what has been built, to the Sewer Authority to operate with the county providing the funds for the ongoing operation and maintenance and repairs of that phase one, as well as for the county to pay for the operation and maintenance of phase two. This being all under the premise that this is for the general public good, for economic development, for the development of the county in that area in general, and because the Sewer Authority is incapable of using its member municipalities' funds to, for a venture like this, since it's in an unincorporated area. So that's where we've been. What is in front of you today are two issues really. The Sewer Authority has gotten back to us with some comments, some suggested revisions on the latest portions of the agreement. But two, and this is an issue I'd rather, yeah, let's take up first, is the transfer of phase one. We've been operating under the idea, which was conveyed to us by a number of different entities, that the county had to transfer phase one, what's been built, to the Sewer Authority in order for the Sewer Authority to get the grant funds for phase two. We kept trying to get this in writing and never could. The Sewer, Sewer Authority was essentially told the same thing. They operated under the same premise. It turns out that at some point in the beginning, the EDA and the RIA, who are the, who are the primary funding, grant funding agencies, just were told by someone who I don't think is, is with us any longer or is involved in this conversation, that that's the way that it was going to be. That the county was going to transfer phase one. So EDA and RIA in processing the grants operated under that idea. We talked to them, Ms. Brock and I talked to Sewer Authority folks, and then we talked to the EDA representative and the RIA representative last week, and they confirmed that we can in fact, the county can in fact retain ownership of phase one and just have, under a tight agreement again, have the Sewer Authority operate phase one and phase two, so the whole Sewer South system, being both of those phases, from the treatment facility to Highway 85 is a concerted system. I will say that the ladies from the EDA and the RIA were not on board necessarily with that idea of the county retaining ownership. They were concerned with why the county would want to do that in light of the county not being in the Sewer Authority or in the sewer business. We talked to them, explained to them the value of the asset, that it's, you know, how it's paid for and why the county may want to retain that ownership. They understood that. So they're just kind of having to shift their paradigm of how they're approaching it. In the end, while they may not have fully understood it or may not have been necessarily for it because it's a little, adds some tweaks to the way the system's going to operate, they said it could be done, get the operation agreement in place. And obviously, we have to get de-hec to prove our role as a satellite owner of a sewer system, but that would be good. So that's really the first issue for y'all to think about is whether you want to retain ownership of what has been built and just enter into an operation and maintenance agreement.
Do you need a motion to, to ask director?
I think y'all need to discuss that and see where you're at collectively on that because that will feed into the next question, which are the, our responses to the comments for the Sewer Authority. Some we won't need to respond to, some we will respond to in a different manner.
Right.
So see where you are on that. At the end, you'll have a motion to direct me to redraft that agreement in one manner or another and send it back to the Sewer Authority.
It would be my personal opinion to maintain owner and work on operating agreement on phase one.
It's, it's a $9 million asset to the county. So that's a $9 million asset that the taxpayers of Oconee County own. I'm for us retaining it.
I'm, I'm in favor of retaining the phase one as long as that does not negatively impact the ability to qualify or procure that grant funding because it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get that funding and we need to seize that. So, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of it as long as it doesn't negatively impact it. Ms. Brock's nodding, yes, like it's not, you don't think it will negatively.
That was one of the things that we asked repeatedly.
I think we asked on that phone conversation because that's certainly a primary concern, at least from three different angles, that same question. And they said again, while they're, while they're a bit, not surprised wasn't the right word. They thought it was an awkward, perhaps, relationship. It wouldn't impact the grant so long as we had the operation agreement in place and it all operated as one system.
I'm for giving it to the Sewer Authority because even though it's nine million bucks there, what good is it to the citizens if we don't have someplace to connect it?
Well, the agreement is what connects it. I mean, that's what the phase two has to connect into phase one.
We wouldn't go forward with this with the county maintaining ownership. If it didn't connect, that'll be part of the operation agreement. The whole framework will still be the same. The county would just maintain the ownership of phase one. It would absolutely have to connect to phase two, which is to be built and go down to the highway as one system for the, for it to work, for the grant funds to come in, for all to go forward.
Maybe I used the wrong word. I don't personally, I don't see it's any advantage for the county to own it. If it's nine million or 16 million, it's not any advantage to us to have it. It should be the Sewer Authority and let them operate it. That's what their thing was, own, operate, and service. So I'm all for giving it to them.
Mr. McCall, anything on that?
Well, it does go cost the taxpayers a bunch of money, so it doesn't make any difference.
Do you need a?
Yeah, I think in light of that we at least appear to have some division on that issue, maybe make a motion. First part of the motion would be a motion to direct the county attorney to revise the transfer and operation agreement to retain ownership of phase. to revise the transfer and operation agreement to retain ownership of phase one with the county, and then y'all can discuss and, and decide if you really want to do that, and then we'll move on to the second phase.
I'll make a motion for, to instruct the county attorney to hold on to phase one and work on an operating agreement with the, uh, Joint Regional Sewer Authority.
I make a motion. Let me, I, I second it, I'm sorry.
Come, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. All right. Okay.
All right, so the second issue was, or, or, number of issues were, and I emailed these to you. Mr. Larry Brant, Attorney for Sewer Authority, had some responses to certain portions of the initial transfer and operation agreement. I don't know if y'all have all of those in front of you. I will say there, there are two primary ones, and, and both of these go to the county funding the expansion and extension of the system. And what we had written in both of these provisions were that the county, like I outlined before, because the county has to pay for that because the Sewer Authority cannot, it'll be offset by customer fees as customers come on, that the county would pay for such extensions, um, the construction of those to the extent they're not grant funded or otherwise, or operation and maintenance, but as the parties agree, and we've agreed to certain things already. Reason I put it as the parties might agree was to make it specific that the Sewer Authority wouldn't present us with a bill after work had been done. Um, obviously, that bill could be very large in this setting. And in response to that, while I don't think the Sewer Authority is opposed to that, the Sewer Authority, as y'all saw, wanted to incorporate in both of these provisions, three point three and three point seventeen, five prior agreements between, I'll say between the county and the Sewer Authority and the cities loosely. Those five prior agreements, one of, don't really speak to funding solely, they don't. They speak to a number of issues, one of which, um, this predates the existence of the Sewer Authority completely, one of which doesn't speak to funding really at all. Three of which pretty much speak to funding in the same way that I would propose that we respond to this. The reason I wanna propose a different response is because you're introducing by way of these, incorporating these agreements into this one paragraph, just a myriad of different issues, 'cause these things go to, one goes to the creation of the Sewer Authority and how it's set up and who gets to vote and, and how the funding mechanism between the cities and, and the authority, and, and the other agreements do the same thing. They speak to other issues that are, ninety-nine percent don't relate to just the funding of extensions that the county asks for. So both of those, I believe, can be reworded. And I sent this over to Mr. Brant, and I don't think he's opposed to it. He just hasn't, needs to present it to his board and have them have their full input, but wording rather along the lines of, "The cost of the construction, maintenance, and operation of the extensions and expansion designated by the county shall not be charged to Sewer Authority member municipalities or their customers. Rather, the county shall provide adequate funding for the construction, maintenance, and operation of such extensions and expansions to be determined on a case-by-case basis," and I, we can insert consistent with prior agreement, so we're focused just on the cost, "in advance of charges being incurred by the Sewer Authority therefore." So my recommendation would be that we substitute that language for the broad incorporation of these five agreements, which I think would invite litigation at worst, controversy certainly down the road. So we can, we can hold that for, that'd be three point three and three point seventeen. The other items that Mr. Brant brought up, um, three point sixteen, we requested, before, we thought we, they agreed to this, that the Sewer Authority would not do business essentially outside of O'Conne County. They wanted that stricken. They're stating that as a matter of law, they didn't believe they could. My response was, okay, well, if, if they cannot as a matter of law, then let's just leave it in there. I think there are some means by which they could, by contract, not necessarily extending their boundaries. So I was concerned with that, I wanted to leave it in there. Mr. Brant didn't seem opposed to that. He thinks that they'll be fine with that, so obviously suggests that we say, no, we'd like to keep three sixteen in there, keep the Sewer Authority doing business in O'Conne County. Obviously, it's a big asset. We don't necessarily wanna, uh, rival county for economic development purposes or state benefiting from this asset. The other big one, then, would be sixteen, paragraph sixteen of the agreement. This is where you all asked to be, have an, um, ex officio commissioner appointed. The Sewer Authority responded, or Mr. Brant responded, stating that the board really could not do that or would not facilitate that with the member municipalities, that they thought that that would, again, need to be co, need to be something that the municipalities approved individually, and would be something that the county should work out with those municipalities and bring back to them at such a point in time as was appropriate. I just leave that to y'all, how you want to handle that. That, to, I guess, to, it's all speculative, but to the extent that we're maintaining the line, you have some more power in this relationship than you did if you transferred it. So that's one notion, and how that plays out, you know, you don't know. My crystal ball is broken, um, but, but perhaps you do. But I would put that for you right now for discussion on what you wanna do with the, you requesting the ex officio seat, and they said essentially, no.
I will say I'm disappointed.
The, the one part, let's start with the one part about the prior agreements. Prior agreements stay in place regardless of the new agreement, that's the way it goes. And I think the language that you speak of, of that addresses the, the prior agreements, however, not commingling them in this agreement. So, um, I feel that that's proper on that agreement, and then I think we can discuss on that. But I'll open it up on those prior agreements. 'Cause we're not changing the prior agreements.
That's correct, no, they're, they're still in place.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Anybody okay to leave the prior agreements out as stated per the, that? Do you want a motion on that?
Yeah, if I, motion to direct the county attorney to, um, respond to the Sewer Authority with the language he previously stated in response to the, their substitute language, incorporating the agreements for extension and expansion.
I'll make a motion as stated by the county attorney.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Move on to, um, three. Can we limit the talk from the outside? If y'all wanna discuss anything, you can walk outside right there. Three sixteen was the other one that you wanted to discuss, which was keeping the language of inside, uh, keeping the, um, them from going outside county lines with that, and we were keeping that in there. Pursuant to their language where they discussed that they cannot do that, however, we, you know, I, I do feel, along with what you're stating on there, that I do, if, if they're not allowed to do that, then the language being in there shouldn't be an issue. Any other discussion on that? I have a motion to direct the county attorney to leave that language in there as discussed?
I make a motion.
Second.
Can we discuss that for just a second?
Yes, please.
Um, they're saying that if, that if they have language and they're limiting their extension of service to other counties, municipalities, states, whatever, that that is not within their decision-making authority. Is that what they're saying?
I've heard it phrased a couple ways. I'll just, the, the written response was, "The board is prohibited, as a matter of law, from extending service beyond the boundaries of O'Conne County to persons, entities, or areas outside of O'Conne County. The board does not believe such a provision in this agreement is necessary." I guess therefore, so...
Well, the law can change, right?
Sir?
The law could change, and they, it could become legally possible for them to do that. So we're gonna bind them by contract and not make sure they still don't do that, right?
Yeah, and I think my approach is twofold. One, yes, the law could change, the boundaries could change for the Sewer Authority. But two, we have a constitutional provision that allows political subdivisions of the state to work together, as we often do with Pickens County or with the municipalities, for the, the joint operation of a service, provision of a service, or for a multitude of other things. So I do believe the Sewer Authority could contract for a service with an outside political subdivision of the state and still accomplish something that we may not want accomplished. So I think that's why three sixteen should stay.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And the, uh, last one is discussed on the ex officio, um, pursuant to holding up the, um, I guess, the agreement or the, the, uh, grant. If we do go to the municipalities and talk to them about that, that would be the manner is what Mr. Brant's talking about, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, um, I'm not saying it's off the table, but, um, I have a motion to, um, remove that from this agreement.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Back there, we were in the executive session, talking with those people. And they said, oh, it's okey-dokey, we'll have, we'll be back to you in a week, uh, about getting a seat on there. Well, all they gotta do is talk to the municipalities. And now we have amnesia setting in. And I'm, I agree with Mr. Elliott. I'm very disappointed with their, their attitude and their actions.
With, with, uh, the correct instruction on that would be to make a motion to go, um, and appeal to the municipalities after, if we're not gonna hold it accountable, accountable on this contract to, um, from an administration standpoint or a council person to, or, you know, go before the municipality to ask for that seat and ask for support of that seat.
I, I think the motion would be to direct the county attorney to strike the language requesting an ex officio commissioner's seat and to direct the administrator to approach the municipalities about adding an ex officio seat to the Sewer Authority. Uh, I, I agree, Mr. McCall, with what you're stating, that is the way it was presented to us. I think they were not, uh, at that point, the Sewer Authority representatives with the benefit of their counsel. So I think their attorney has, I don't think he's dead set on the fact that they could not do it by way of just the Sewer Authority, but he's concerned about it. So he would rather it be done through the municipalities. And so that's, that's, I think, why. I don't know the conversations, but that's why I think that they've changed course with that.
Well, in light of that, I'll make a motion to strike that language about, uh, requiring ex officio member as stated by our attorney.
Second.
Come. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So, yes, Mr. Chairman, the last one was, they, this is a little bit mingled up, but they ask for it, the as-is language that we had in there to be struck from the agreement. That's no longer relevant if we're gonna retain the asset. They also asked that the parties, that there be a anti-assignment or really alienation clause without the consent of the other parties. Essentially have that in there already, but we can put that in the particular paragraph they're asking for. I don't see, I, there's no reason to oppose that.
Okay. I have a motion for that.
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Say that on that?
Just making sure. Yep, that's all of them.
Okay. Appreciate your work on that. Also appreciate all the work that council's doing. I know there's been a lot of time and discussion on that, uh, as well, so, um, so we'll move into board and commission appointments, um, building codes. Still don't have, um, that, District one and three, anybody from that side of things? Okay. Uh, Arts and Historical, we do have a, um, this would be from District two, uh, which is an at-large seat, so it doesn't matter. Uh, we have Daniel, uh, Drayer. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any other at-large seats for Arts and Historical? Okay. Conservation Bank Board, District one, do I have a nomination at this time?
Not, not yet.
Okay. All right. Um, we will move on, uh, council committee reports, Mr. Hart, Transportation.
At approximately four thirty, February the nineteenth, two thousand and nineteenth, we held the, uh, Transportation Committee meeting. Mr. Kyle Reed of the Roads and Bridge Department gave us a short presentation. The first part of his presentation was Savannah Drive, so Private Road Thirty-Fifty, and it was to be, see if it could be accepted in the rudimentary road program. Savannah Drive is approximately twenty-three hundred feet long and an estimated cost of thirty thousand dollars. The property line is the center line of Savannah Drive with a fifty-foot right-of-way, twenty-five feet each side of center. At the time we discussed this, we had a three to zero vote to bring it to the full committee or the full council. And, uh, that's what we'll be doing, is to see if we wanna accept it. The second thing, Mr. Reed introduced the, uh, Herbert, uh, Albert Adams Road, County Road CE twelve, uh, for it, to be added to our new construction list. Albert Adams Road is approximately thirteen hundred feet long, and the road has all its right-of-way, including the cul-de-sac at the end of the road. And that was a three to oh vote also to be brought to the full council. And that's the end of my report.
Okay. To stay along with transportation, if council's okay to move through, um, from the request, from transportation, if you'll go ahead and bring your request forward, Mr. Hart, if council's okay with that?
I'd like to, uh, bring, uh, Savannah Drive to the rudimentary program.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Hold on just a second.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you can bring it, and this motion's fine, you can bring it in front of council. We have a re, resolution written out to that effect, which I would just say, let's just keep it in, in order. But you can continue on, so it's in front of council, the resolution will be in front of council.
It is Resolution twenty nineteen oh five, I'm sorry, Mr. Hart, if you wanted to. Let me read that real quick. Resolution to receive and accept Savannah Drive, uh, including Brady Drive and Austin Drive, which are extensions of Savannah Drive, all being considered. One road for the purpose of this resolution, collectively Savannah Drive into O'Conne County rudimentary, rude, oh, that's a hard word to say, pursuant to section twenty-six dash twelve of the O'Conne County Code of Ordinance. So, um, no amendments necessary on that. We do have a motion, we do have a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Come. All right. Jump back to real estate facilities and land management, um...
Did we get both roads in on that one?
Um...
No, sir.
No, sir. At this time, that was the only ordinance that you had on that one.
What you can do, it wasn't, the motion wasn't printed on the agenda. That came out of transportation. I don't remember the name of the other road, but what you can do is make a motion to amend the agenda if you want to, or it can be put on the next agenda.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda as stated by Mr. Hart for that. You wanna state that real quick, to be clear?
Yeah, I wanna amend the agenda to put Albert Adams Road on the agenda to be, uh, accepted in our list of new roads to be constructed.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor to amend the agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We need a motion, um, to accept that.
I'd like to make a motion that Albert, uh, Adams Road be accepted into our, uh, uh, new constructed list of roads.
Okay. Do I have a second? Come. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Come.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Hart.
All right. Jump back to there, sorry about that. Real estate facility land management met on March fifth. We had the forum center update by, uh, Mr. Gibson. Constructing the second entrance to the forum center through, uh, C funds. Um, they've got another farmer's market grant to continue to keep that going. They got several team roping events that they've continued to go, um, put on. They've had five events canceled due to rain, but they're continuing to have a lot of, um, team roping events, and they have several bell racing and rodeo scheduled on May third and... and rodeo scheduled on May Third and Fourth. Committee took no action at this time. We did have, uh, update on the Westminster Magistrate as, um, Ms. Brock updated the committee regarding the Westminster Magistrate noting, uh, most of the information is from November twenty eighteen. We had several, um, estimates from Terricon, which is approximately two hundred thousand for the abatement and demolition of down to the concrete pad. So, I, I think at this time, we're not going to stay with what we were originally talking about on that. We continued to have discussion in the process of securing an architect to design the building, possibly locating the building on the current location. We had talked about a commitment to work with the City of Westminster to construct a magistrate in City Hall. And we want to identify, um, a building. We met with, we've looked at several buildings on there, we've looked at several different locations. And the goal was to provide a drawing and an actual, um, site by the next meeting, which is on April the second. Committee took no action on that. And, um, the next Real Estate Facilities Land Management Committee meeting scheduled for Tuesday, June Fourth, at four thirty, uh, to proceed or follow Budget Finance Administration Committee meeting, Plan and Economic Development on the same day. No motions needed on that, we'll move to Plan and Economic Development, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Economic Development Committee met March Fifth, twenty nineteen. Ms. Janet Hartman, interim Okone Economic Alliance Director, addressed the committee highlighting, um, the Business Incubator update and Economic Alliance update, which included the Action Plan for Twenty-Nineteen. Their goals, uh, product development, Okone Industry Technology Park, the Seneca Rail Site, and the Think Okone video, and also Opportunity Zones, committee took no action. The next Planning Economic Development Committee meeting scheduled for Tuesday, June Fourth, twenty nineteen, beginning at four thirty P M. And will immediately proceed or follow the Real Estate Facilities Land Management meeting and the Budget Finance Administration Committee meetings, which are also scheduled at four thirty. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We have no unfinished business unless there is unfinished business from the floor. Any new business? All right, we do have executive session, as you see, we have struck, uh, the first one, which was the Sewer South, we did discuss that in open session. We do need executive session for discussion regarding economic development matter, Project Aztec, discussion regarding economic development matter, Project Plan Four, and receive legal advice, discuss personnel matters related to the following departments, Rock Quarry, Auditor, Finance, Assessor, Information Technology, Finance, Human Resource, Sheriff's Office, Airport, Treasurer, Facilities Maintenance, Road and Bridges, Plan and Solid Waste, Registration and Elections, Procurement and Administration, do I have a motion to enter into the executive session?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Action reconvened please?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session.